My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton? Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rothhauser?
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. First up is our reports from our student board representatives. Sarah is here tonight.
For the elementary report, spring pictures are coming over the next few weeks. Life Touch will be in each elementary building for the picture days. All elementary buildings recognize exemplary students for the second marking period with a soaring eagle luncheon or breakfast. The elementary schools will be celebrating Read Across America Week promoting the love of reading and participating in several theme days to add to the excitement. For secondary report, students who earned honor roll status for the first and second quarters and who earned the Soaring Eagles Award for each quarter were honored at an evening academic awards recognition assembly. The IS held several fundraiser events. They held the annual dodgeball tournament, which was held to raise funds for the American Heart Association. And a benefit band and choral concert was held to raise non-perishable food for the Dover Food Bank. Pennies for Patients was also held and will begin on February 28th. Team PBIS reward will be held on February 22nd. The Winter Dance for 7th grade students will be held on February 22nd from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. DECA students will be competing at state championships over the next two days. Additionally, the Red Zone, our student-run store, was named one of four Gold Star programs in Pennsylvania. The high school hosted College and Career Day in January. This event saw over 70 community partners take part in career panels, facilitate mock interviews, and participate in a job fair. Kevin Schreiber of the York County Economic Alliance served as a keynote speaker for all students. For our fine arts, Dover will be well represented in all-state jazz. Five students were selected for one of 22 spots in the statewide ensemble. The Spring Musical: Back to the 80s will be held on March 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. For our athletics, our boys' basketball team will play their second game of the District III playoffs on Thursday, February 21st. They will be playing New Oxford at 7:00 p.m. Dover will be well represented at the District III Swimming and Diving Championships on March 1st and 2nd. Dover has both individual and relay teams that have qualified for championships. Winter Sports Awards Night is scheduled for tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. in the main gym. Spring Meet the Team Night is scheduled for March 13th at 6:30 p.m.
Any questions from our board members tonight? I understand that there are some pictures from the 80s yearbooks posted in the high school auditorium lobby. And Ms. Wetzel, also known as Mrs. Kroom, is in the lobby, and yours truly is also there. One of us has aged much better than the other. That's gonna be exciting. I had hair then, so... Okay, if nobody has any questions, we appreciate you, and you're welcome to stay or head out if you need to. Thank you. Okay, we have presentations and celebrations tonight. Our first one is our technology student help desk with Mr. Papa.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce our tech group. And they've been, we started this back in October. And Mrs. Samantha Helwig manages the team and also oversees their projects. So at this time, I'd like to call up Samantha Helwig.
Just for a moment, I'd like you all to know how proud I am of these gentlemen behind me. They took this idea and they ran with it. Everything you've seen is their own. I told them you have a blank slate, and we get to set the stage for whatever comes next in this district. And I'm really, really proud of what they're about to show you. So, gentlemen.
If you can all just make sure that you speak into the microphone, and that's what helps with our recording of the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We are the student tech team of the Dover area high school. I'd like to begin by introducing the members of our team, and I'll begin with myself, Anthony Cavesas-Pow, Noah Elliott, Jacob Eliger, Eli Sauthauer, Tyler Missinger, and Hayden Sanderson. Also pictured is Benjamin Harper. He could not make it to the presentation today, but he is equally a part of the Dover Tech team.
Alright, so the student tech team's main purpose is providing assistance to students and the faculty with common technology issues that they normally have every day, such as like the iPad's not charging, the iPad's case functionality, or just various MacBook issues that the teachers would have. Another job that we have is to assist with the applications or apps that are on the iPads and the MacBooks, like Microsoft apps, Skyward, Schoolager, Google Suite. Currently, the tech team's main focus is diagnosing hardware and software troubleshooting at the user level. We hope to expand to networks in the future, but we would like to finish the current projects that we are working on now.
Okay, for us to help out the people in the school, they need to know us, such as what we do and where we are in the school, which we plan to do through advertisement. Some ways we plan on advertising ourselves is through posters and flyers, signs leading to our location, video ads and announcements on the Dover Daily Show. On the team, we have members of the Dover Daily Show, such as Anthony, Hayden, and myself. So it'll make it way easier to get the word out. Along with these strategies, another way, very prominent way of getting our name out is through the website.
Okay, so we are introducing the Dover Tech team website. We've been working on this for the past several months, starting, when was it, December, around December area. Our intent was to keep it clean and professional. That is what we want to do. Main focus is to assist with students and teacher-related tech-related issues through the integration of the website. It covers many things with apps and devices, including iPad, MacBook, Outlook, Skyward, and more. These then have subcategories on information, including troubleshooting, tips and tricks, common questions and answers, and navigation help.
So a little spin-off to the main website is a mini-website with the intention of assisting and supporting teachers with their new iPads that are currently being distributed at the new high, at the high school. And it has a planned release date for next week, and this is something, this is so teachers have something to work with now and to reference to if they were to ever have any issues setting up their new iPads. And since the main site will be released on March 1st, the content on here will be moved over to that site so they can continue referencing the material on that new website, starting beginning in March. And anyone with future issues, so any teachers with, like, issues that still persist after setup or referencing the guides can always submit a ticket through the FMX system or come visit us at the ILC at the high school.
Okay, we are also building an iOS app. So far, we just started the design, and the design is finished. So now we just have to start making it. By building this app, it creates an extra layer of professionalism in the same way that Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, they all have a website, but they also have an app. It also has many features, some that mimic the website, but it also has unique features. So it'll be able to remind students and teachers of appointments that they have with us. This way, they don't forget. It's a lot more efficient. They will also feature guides that we display on the website, and it'll also recommend featured guides. So like if we see that students and teachers are having problems with one specific guide, then we'll be able to recommend that to teachers and students. We're also allowing teachers to submit tech requests. Instead of them having to come to us or email us, it just goes straight through FMX. We are also notifying students and teachers of important notices. So like the iPads, they weren't charging, and one reason is because it wasn't updated. So this way, we can let them know, hey, you need to update your iPad so that you can charge it, and it'll be fine for you to use during school. The app also allows for future growth. So when they are going through the guides, it will ask them if it is helpful or not, so that we can see if we need to tweak it or not. It also allows for feedback in general, so if there are any bugs or anything in the app, then they can tell us and we can fix it. And it's also a lot more customizable, since we are building it ourselves, so we can do more with it than we can with anything else.
And now for a demo of the website as well as the application that we have.
So this is the homepage of the Dover Tech team website. So as Tyler said, we've been starting this since around the beginning of December. So this is where we explain to the students where we are located, and we also explain the services we provide. So this is the central hub. So the central hub provides the minor troubleshooting issues and the minor, well, not minor, my bad. And it also provides tips and tricks to help students and staff get like more familiar with their iPads and the applications and their MacBooks. We also decided for the central hub to go through a tile design to make it a lot easier to navigate. So one, an example of an article we developed for the central hub is files. So in this, we have, we provided images, and we also provided tutorials to help make it a lot easier for the students and staff to read for minor issues. We also provided GIFs or animated images as well. So next, we have submitted tickets. This is linked through FMX. And only teachers are allowed to use submitted ticket, but students are also able to submit a Google form that we provide a QR code throughout the school with posters. Next, we have our technology forms. So these come straight from the Dover website. It makes it like a lot easier for students or staff members to know where the technology forms are. And lastly, we have our contact information for Mrs. Shelwig and the Dover Tech team help desk.
And then I just wanted to show you guys a screenshot of the app design. Since we haven't started it, it's not interactive like the website is yet, but this is a screenshot. So on the left-hand side, this is what it'll look like when you open it up. You can see on the top that those are tiles that recommend like new articles, so like one about iOS 12, so that students can, and teachers, explore the new features. And then below those tiles, you can see those like gray tiles, and those are where it recommends or tells you about scheduled appointments and if your battery's low. And then you can click those to see, read articles about those things. Like if your battery's low, but it's not charging, well, then you can click that, and then it talks about how to fix it if it's not charging. And then below that, you can see more recommended guides and articles to help students and teachers with any problems that they're seeing.
So this is the logo we designed. So the two main ones are the white and the black eagle. So this represents us to the students that we are the tech team. We also created t-shirts, so when we are on our rotations. The smaller head in the top right corner, we use this in like flyers, posters, and on forms. We also use this as an email signature, so like it genuinely, it's like genuinely us and not a scam.
Since a majority of the tech team members are all seniors, we're looking into recruiting new students that are currently taking the tech program at school. We hope to begin training them by March 15th, getting them kind of associated with the normal stuff that we have to deal with. And by May, we hope to then incorporate them into the team as new recruits, get them doing the normal help desk stuff that we do day-to-day, you know, further, like, add more ideas to what they could do the next year after we've all left and improve the growth of the team. So thank you all for listening to us. Do you have any questions?
I think that was great, guys. A lot of neat information there. I'm really impressed with what you're doing. Just a quick question. How many requests for help do you get on an average day?
On an average day, we, so we have like an Excel or a Google Sheets document with a record of all the like tickets that we get in, the students that give to us. We get around, I'd say, 10 to 15 a day. And we try to, we will do it during our specified periods or during flex, just help them out. It's usually something very quick. It takes about a minute or two. If it's something more complicated, like a cracked screen or any physical damage, then we have to move it up to the Level 2 technicians, and they take care of that.
Most of your requests come from the staff or students or a little bit of each, or?
It's both, but more students and staff. But both definitely, we get, we get requests from both students and staff.
Anybody else?
I was just gonna make a comment. When I sit here and I listen to you guys talk about this technology, I wouldn't consider myself to be, you know, totally technologically illiterate, but every once in a while, there's an awakening when you realize that life might have passed you by. This is kind of one of those times when you guys talk about, you know, the students teaching the teachers. And I guess it's the world we live in, and it's, it makes you really aware of the fact that, you know, just like when my kids were growing up, some of the things that they were doing in 8th grade, I didn't do when I graduated, you know. So, you know, and I guess that's just kind of the progression, but this is the world we live in. You guys are providing a great service. So thanks for what you're doing and for the, for the staff that is working with them, and, you know, this is our future. And so, you know, it's, it's, it can be a great thing, but it does take the support behind it to help everybody get on board with where they need to be. I think we're very blessed to have you guys doing what you're doing, so thank you.
Technology, technology is something that's constantly evolving, so like, well, the best we can do is help you as a user get past the learning curve and be able to utilize your, your equipment much better, like what it's actually meant for, and use it to its ultimate purpose, for instruction in class, things like that.
Anybody else?
Is this all, is this, is this new this year? Is this just the first year you guys have been doing all that? Wow.
Anybody else? Great job, guys. Thank you very much. Co-teaching, Mrs. Gross in the intermediate school.
Gentlemen, you have done an outstanding job, and I really would like to hire you to come help me. Absolutely excellent. I was, and I really am very difficult. You'd have your work cut out. But thank you for that presentation. It was absolutely wonderful. Good evening, everyone. One of the things that we are doing at the intermediate school is really looking at students and trying to defile programs that will help our students. So we have a couple that we put in place this year, but the biggest one, and one that I'm very excited about, is the co-teaching model. And the co-teaching model takes two teachers in a classroom. Typically, your specialist in content and then a special ed teacher who has all those wonderful skills and strategies to help students and to help teachers learn how to differentiate for, for all of our students. And in the co-teaching model, one of the great things about it is, is that research has shown us that when children are immersed into a very challenging classroom with their peers, a lot of things happen. One of those is that their growth in the subject area increases more rapidly than in a self-contained classroom. The other thing is that you see friendships, relationships, and the self-confidence of the students improving. So we've put together our, our co-teaching models for ELA and math. Mrs. Geyer and Mrs. Strasbaugh actually provided our teachers in the co-teaching model with, with professional development in how to manage the classroom, the strategies. So we're kind of in the norming stage right now and figuring it all out, balancing the instructional, balancing the differentiation. And there are several different ways in which the program, the teachers can model their lessons. And sometimes they'll vary between them. There's a parallel teaching. There's one teacher who may do the primary instruction, one teacher who instructs. They can do it in stations. So there's multiple different strategies that they can use. But the neat thing about it is that all the kids are involved. If you were to walk into that classroom, you wouldn't be able to pick out the gen ed kids from the special ed kids. They're grouped together. You have two teachers working with them, and we're going to see great improvements in growth in our students. So I'm gonna turn it over to our two 8th grade math teachers.
Good evening. I'm Linda Shear.
Hi, I'm Diane Patch. Okay, so when you decide to co-teach, one, there's a few things you have to think about. You can't just say, oh yeah, this is what we're gonna do. So one of the first kind of things that we thought about was how are we gonna present ourselves to the students? I mean, and we decided, you know, we need to present a unified front. And to do that, we had to take some steps to get there. One of the things, and it sounds kind of interesting, I mean, basic, but organizing your space. As Linda sort of comes into my classroom, I have to make sure that when we're both in there, we are both the head teacher. So we designated, I made sure I designated, there's, you know, I have a desk, she has a desk. I mean, it sounds kind of simplistic, but it shows the students that we are both the teacher in that room. Not one's just an assistant and one's the lead. So I think that balances how we work things in the classroom.
And not only the organizing the space, but coming together and figuring out our own philosophies, our classroom procedures and expectations, like as a matter of where are we keeping supplies, when are students getting them? I mean, it all is a planning that when you have your own classroom, you just do it. But when you're coming together and it's our classroom now, we need to make sure we're on the same page. And the shared responsibilities of all the work, grading assignments, the, planning the assignments, posting them to Schoolager, who's doing what. So that's all planned out, and that's where we come into the planning part as being crucial.
If we didn't have the planning time together, this would be a much harder endeavor for both of us. We've been really fortunate. Ms. Gross this year has set aside planning time, so not only are we meeting as departments, but we're also meeting as teams. But because we're obviously the same department and team, it gives us that time to work out those details. So we can, that, I mean, again, that's just crucial that we know who's gonna be, I don't wanna say taking the lead, but sometimes, alright, I'm gonna start teaching this and I'll work this, or I'll work with this group and we'll work with this group. It gives you that time that you need to make sure that your classroom and that the kids are getting everything we need and that we're using our time very wisely with our students.
Yes, and the common department time where we get together as a whole 8th grade math department, we are planning the unit down to the days, the calendar, the activities that we're using that are gonna be common. It's just been great as a whole department to plan like this. And it's beneficial for all students. This benefits everyone. Whether it's you're differentiating for small groups of kids that we need to accelerate or those that we need to remediate, or kids that just need to practice. And it's constant conversation of, we need to look at who's getting it, who's not. And when we do those different models, as Mrs. Gross said, if I'm, I'm the lead teacher and Mrs. Patch is doing the observing, she can say, hey, these, this group isn't getting it. I'm gonna pull these to the side, and you go on with that group. And it's during the class period, so it's very beneficial.
Yeah, and the nice thing is too, is you have two sets of eyes on what's going on in your classroom now. So when we, you know, 'cause we like, we'll talk for a couple minutes after the end of each class, and it's a real nice way to reflect and say, okay, that worked great. Oh, this didn't work at all. Or we can tweak this, or this would be better this way. So it's nice to have that feedback from another person who's constantly in there with you. And the nice thing about it too is, as far as teachers too, there's, it provides a continuity with the students, 'cause there's always one of us, you know, there that, you know, knows and what's going on. So it's nice to have that continuity with the students too.
And as we mentioned before, different co-teaching models are used within the period as well as different days. So it just depends on the activities that we're doing, that, what model we use. Lessons learned, I know Mrs. Gross said about growth. Kids are growing. A lot of people, I know in the core content, teachers, they're looking at proficiency. They want them to master everything. Yes, that's our ultimate goal, but when you have kids coming in with specific learning disabilities and we know where they are, we wanna grow them. So we wanna close that gap, and eventually, hopefully, we get them to proficiency. But the growth is the big important thing there.
So, yeah, and I think you already mentioned closing the gap.
Yeah.
So, and, and of course, we do work on all of our 8th grade standards. So we are hitting all of those and making sure that our students, even our students who maybe need to grow more to get to all of them and stuff, they're seeing all these standards, they're working with them, and this is adding to their growth and their ability to grow even further.
So even though they're all on the same standards, what they're doing may look a little bit different, but they're doing the same processes. So that's what works and helps our, all our students.
Thank you. Thanks. Unless you have some questions?
If you, if you would entertain a question or two, I do have a question or two regarding that. Students that have IEPs or GIPs or, you know, as far as your co-teaching now, does that, does this process make it easier to work with those students who have specific issues to work through or specific plans in place that you need to follow? Does it make it easier?
I would say, as far as being easier, you have two of us that we can get to their needs quicker, more quickly. I think they're growing more by this model as far as being in with the other kids. The students are helping each other, if that makes sense. I mean, when they're, when they're in a group, we have them grouped like two or three together, so.
And if I can just add to that, you have two teachers. All the, the IEP is being met by both of those teachers. So one is not, I mean, Linda is obviously the case manager, but Diane is equally as responsible for what their learning needs are. So they're getting that learning within that classroom. They're differentiating for their individual needs by breaking into small groups or working into stations. The other area where they are getting their specific, more intense needs would be in our flex time. So they're co-teaching, but then they go to flex for their special needs to work on their individual goals. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. The other question I had then is, is related to the peer-to-peer interaction that happens as a result of those students not leaving your classroom or going to a separate classroom. Has that softened maybe any kind of stigma's that might happen peer-to-peer because those students remain in the same classroom as their peers? Does that, does that help in that aspect, would you say?
I would think so. I would think so. They're right. When you walk into our co-talk classrooms, you'd be hard-pressed to say who has an IEP and who doesn't. I mean, the, I think that the children and the students realize they're, they're our students. They're all our students. And we work with them individually, and we meet their individual needs, and we work, you know, knowing what their IPs are, whether they have them or not. We still work with all the, all the kiddos and, and really work on getting them all what they need. So as far as removing the stigma, there's, there's, you, I don't, there isn't really one in the classroom, because it's, those are, those are our students.
Right.
So it's not like, oh, those are Mrs. Shear's students and those are Mrs. Patch's students. They're not. Those are all of our kids. And sometimes when we And sometimes when we, because even when we take, sometimes we'll take small groups out of the classroom, they're not always all the kids with the IEPs. They're, we're taking these seven grade kids. You're going to the other room today. The rest are staying in this room and they just.
Based on skill, like why we take them. But, and that happens maybe once a week, but it's not even for the whole period. So.
Yeah.
And usually the kids are like, "I want to go. I want to go."
Yeah.
But it's different grouping, so it's not always learning support kids or the GIP kids leaving the classroom.
And I think what you would see, this is our first year doing it and this is eighth grade. So, the children who were in the replacement classes last year, obviously, students may or may not know who they are. But as you begin with the co-teaching model, so when our incoming seventh graders come in next year, no one's going to know. So, because you have the four schools coming together, we have the co-teaching model started, and the research clearly shows that those children who are in the regular classroom in a co-teaching model, that their whole self-esteem about themselves, their friendships develop much better because they feel better about themselves. They feel included and a part of.
What is your goal for, like, this is math?
Math. We have math and we have ELA.
Math and ELA.
And then, of course, our science and our social studies, all children are pretty much heterogeneous. So, we have learning support aides who are in those classrooms who support, but not in the same way that you have two teachers who can teach. So, and again, we encourage our power professionals to support all children that are struggling in the classroom. I mean, our primary goal obviously is the students with IEPs. But if the IEP student is being successful, then help any child who's struggling that may need help. So, it is a very inclusive model and it's to help all children. And as the lady said, those children who are excelling, when they break out in their groups or they break out into stations, they not only have a remedial station, they have a group of kids that they're on grade level that may need a little bit of extra help. They've got extension stations going on as well. So, it's really a cool thing to see.
Thank you.
So, how many teams are there?
There are, we have an eighth grade co-teaching team and an eighth grade math in ELA and a seventh grade math in ELA. So, Linda works with two teachers.
I teach two periods with Diane and then I'm also with Devin Fortney on the other team.
The beauty of it is, is like Linda said, they have common planning time every day. So, they're meeting every day either as a grade-level team or they're meeting as a department. So, every day they're meeting, they meet after school. They have their grade-level time and then they have their personal plan time, which those ladies are always staying for both periods.
Yeah, because planning is crucial.
Yeah, it does take some, more attention to some of the detail of how you're going to kind of divvy things up or split things up or how people feel about working with one thing or another. So, but, you know, it is a work in progress, as you know, any cooperative thing is. But I think we're doing pretty, we're getting pretty, moving along pretty nicely.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Mr. Lethery, athletic scheduling.
Good evening, everyone. I guess I'm addressing a question that came up back in the fall regarding football scheduling. Let me just, I want to briefly just go through how our league is set up as far as the divisions go. There's 23 teams in the league, so that's a, with three divisions. There's an eight Division One teams, seven Division Two teams, and eight Division Three teams. We fall in Division Two with the seven. If you do the math, if you have the eight teams, most of the schools in the state actually have first three weeks or bye weeks, weeks one, two, and three, and then they play their league schedules. Where the teams that have eight teams in their divisions, they can play their first three week games and then have seven teams that they play, so that fills our 10-week schedule. With us in Division Two, we have our first three non-league games and then we play six league games, which gives us nine games, which lets us with a floating bye. So, what the league does is arbitrarily gives each team in Division Two a week that they have a floating bye. Our week happened to be, in this previous, or the two-year cycle we're in right now, our floating bye week happened to be week eight. So, that charges me with trying to find a team that has a floating bye in week eight, which obviously is not going to be in our league. So, we need to start looking outside our league for a team that has a floating bye in week eight. So, we go to the Mid-Penn, we go to Lancaster-Lebanon. We look for teams and what I try to do is look for teams that are close to us in single A, double A, triple A, quad A, or six A, which we're five A, like, we wouldn't want to play a single A school that has a week eight bye that wouldn't help us out or we necessarily wouldn't want to also play like a, you know, Cumberland Valley or a Wilson or a very, very high six A team that has a week eight bye. So, we found Mifflin County for this cycle. They were close to us and I think they're also a five A team. They were close to us in strength of schedule. So, that's why we went with Mifflin County. There was some concern with the traveling there. I did go through just so you can do some comparison with the other teams in our division and their bye weeks. For instance, Kennerdale had their bye week on week four. They played Big Spring, which was an 80-mile trip for them. West York had their bye week in week five. They played Wyomissing, which is a 56-mile trip for them. York Suburban had their bye week, week six. They played Muhlenberg, which was a 58-mile trip for them. Susquehannock had their bye week, week seven. They hooked up with the Mid-Penn team in Northern, which was good for them. Just so happened that it worked out, which was a 33-mile trip. We, as I said, had our bye week in week eight, which we ended up with Mifflin County and that was an 82-mile trip. Eastern York had a bye week, week nine. They had to play Wissa Hicken, which was a 90-mile trip. And Gettysburg ended up with the week 10 bye and they found Greencastle-Antrim, which was a 35-mile trip, which those seven games averaged out to be about 62 miles or an average traveling time of about an hour and 15 minutes. So, that's how our league is, the divisions are decided. It's every two years, we're handing in numbers for the next year's set, the same as this year, and then we'll be handing in numbers there due March 1st for the new two-year cycle, which the way things are looking now as far as our enrollment, we very well could be moving up to Division One in a lot of sports for next year. So, or for the next two-year cycle. I looked outside our division, Redline, one of their games that they played as a non-league game was Chambersburg, which was an 83-mile trip. And Northeastern and Northern, I know Northern is in the Mid-Penn, but Northeastern is in the YAIAA. Northeastern and Northern both played in Mifflin County this year as well. So, that's how, that's how the scheduling of football worked out. Any questions?
Unless you play in a bye week.
Well, I guess you wouldn't have to. You just wouldn't, you wouldn't have the same amount of games as everybody else. I mean, I haven't, not since I've been athletic director, heard of a team not playing their 10, their 10 allotted games from the PIAWA.
So, it's basic policy that?
It's not, I mean, you can play 10 games per the PIAWA. You don't have to play that many games, but then you'll be putting yourself behind the eight ball as far as power rankings and getting points for making into the district tournament. So, what we try to do is, especially with football, is play the 10-week schedule.
So, basically what you're saying, if you have a bye week, then that could hurt your points to make it into the playoff.
It could, yeah.
Looking back over a number of years, I mean, I can remember we played a lot of other schools that were a lot, lot closer. I guess it begs the question from the average person is why don't we play some of the more local schools that we once did? From what I'm hearing you say, it's mainly because of.
The floating bye week and trying to hook that week up with another team.
Right.
We didn't have that. We were in Division One a lot of those years and we only had the three front end of our schedule weeks to fill, which every other school around has to fill those three weeks, so it's a lot easier to fill those games. They're getting harder and harder to fill now. We play Shippensburg, we play Redland, and we play E-Town. E-Town's going to be going away in the two-year cycle and we're going to be picking up Northern as a regular season game. So, they're fairly close. But the floating bye, when we went back down to Division Two, that put us in a pickle in trying to find a team that had that same exact week open that.
Right, right.
You know, if they were close, it would have been in luck of the draw. Like, the last two-year cycle, we ended up with Conrad Weiser because that was who fit that bye. So, it's just that floating bye that kind of makes it difficult for teams to, I mean, I know some teams that had to go out of state and points didn't even count towards the PIAWA, but just to play that game, a few teams went out of state to find teams and Maryland just to play during that floating bye week.
I appreciate you coming and sharing that. I was one of them, one of the people that did ask some questions. And I think from my standpoint, what I, where I was really coming from is, I don't know if you remember, a few years ago, Eastern was playing a game and there was a bad accident on their way back and it was, I don't know, it was some ungodly hour late at night when they were coming back. And it just started to make me wonder why we're going so far away.
Yeah, that's, yep, that's why I wanted to clear that up as to why we do that. I think our, I think, I'm trying to remember the other team that fit from the Lancaster-Lebanon, Lancaster LL League that fit that week eight was either Hempfield or Wilson. We don't really want anything to do with Hempfield or Wilson. I'm not putting our team down, but that wouldn't be a good situation for anybody. So, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lethery. Okay, the moment we've all been waiting for, Mrs. Benko and debt discussions.
Okay, now for my hour-long presentation. Okay, so every year or so, I try and make sure that the board and the public are aware of where, what our debt situation is. This year, it is a little bit more important because last year, we, last fall, we were, spring, we went out for our first part of the funding for our new high school. And this year, we will be going out for the second part of that funding in the spring and possibly also the funding for renovations to the middle school. So, just our debt profile, currently, the district has five outstanding bond issues. Those issues are successive issues that have been structured to create a wraparound or approximately level payment schedule of approximately $6 million prior to the next two fundings. And at that point, it'll be about $7 million. Four of the five issues we currently have are on a short-term schedule, all of which will be paid off by 2027. We have been issued a solid credit rating in the past and our debt service as a percentage of our budget currently is equal to 9.32%. The statewide average on this is about 10%. My preliminary budget projections through the next five years, with all of the bond issues that we have to undertake, are, it holds true to about 10%. So, just real quick, our outstanding debt profile, I'm going to go through each one of these individually. But 2008 is still outstanding. It was an original bond issue of $15 million. That financed various capital projects and it was a combination of a fixed and variable rate debt. 2015 A and B refunded 2010 bonds. Between those two issues, the refunding gave us a savings of approximately $583,000. We issued a bond in 2016, which refunded, it was the last opportunity to refund portion of our 2011 A bonds. And we realized the savings about $257,000 there. This one will be paid off at the end of 2021. We did just pay off a 2013 bond at the end of 1718 also. The 2018 bond issue, as I spoke to earlier, it was a $29.2 million borrowing. This was the first borrowing, first portion of the borrowing for the new high school. The proceeds will be utilized to offset costs of construction of the high school and also renovation of the middle school. New debt in spring of 2019. So, we will be, I had a rating call today on this debt. The second portion of the borrowing for the new high school will be about $29.5 million. And the proceeds for this one will also be used to offset costs of the construction of the high school and the renovation of the new middle school. And 2019 A bond issue, which is $6.5 million, hopefully also to be issued in the spring of 19, is the borrowing for the renovations and additions to transition the current high school to the new middle school. Lauren Stadel from RBC is here. She'll talk about this a little bit more, these two issues, a little bit more in depth further on in my presentation. So, in this presentation, just so you have the information, here is an outstanding, or the gross amount payable for each year that is left on each bond issue. So, for the 2008 bond issue, we have total outstanding debt of about $16 million. That is gross and does not take into consideration any reimbursement, reimbursement from the state in the plan con process. 2015 A, total outstanding debt is 9.9 million, again, gross. B is 9.4 million. The 2016 bond issue that I said will be paid off in 2021 has outstanding debt payments of 8.1 million. 2.7 of that will be this year. And then this is the first portion of the high school borrowing and that was done on June 26th of 2018 at 29.2 million. And the total outstanding principal and interest payments for that through 2039 is 51.2 million. This is just a preliminary snapshot of the 2019 bond issue. This is subject to change. And this should actually, here we go, if this is the right slide, I apologize. This is subject to change and this will hopefully be done in the spring of 19, here coming up in March. And that total outstanding debt will be about 50.8 million. The bond issue will be 29.5. And then the 2019 A issue for the renovation will be 6.5 million with outstanding debt up through 40 of 11.8 almost. So, this slide here takes into effect a couple of different things. Total outstanding debt service payments on a gross basis, so this does not include any state reimbursement. 156 million through 2040. You'll see our debt payments are around averaging about 7, 7.2 million dollars. When you take into consideration plan con funding and the middle column there assumes no plan con funding for the new high school project. Now, we're kind of, we're hoping we do get that funding for the current high school project because we were in the pipeline before the moratorium for the debt, for plan cons. So, net amount payable, which would be, you know, your debt subsidy and the revenues and your bond payments and the expenditures, total outstanding debt would be about $138 million, where your net amount payable there averages about $6.5 million. If you would like to assume, and this is actually 9%, not 15, I apologize, I forgot to change that this morning, it's a 9% plan con funding for the new high school. It's hopefully what we'll be getting for that. Again, 139, I'm sorry, these two columns are switched. So, the net amount payable in the last column is actually without the plan con. The net amount payable with the funding for the high school is about 137. So, you're looking at an average 6.5 between either plan con funding or not plan con funding for your net bond payments. So, assuming no plan con funding for the high school project, the total outstanding debt, here's just a chart that kind of shows you, in 1920, it goes a little higher and that's where we're transferring the majority of the funds from the capital project. About $2.5 million from the capital projects will transfer into the general fund to make that bond payment. And then it lowers a little bit and then it goes back up and levels off through 38, 39. Budget projections and status as of right now. Budget projections and status as of right now, it looks, are like our preliminary projections for 1819 show an ending general fund balance of approximately $18.24 million. Projected capital research, reserves fund balance for 1819 are projected at approximately $13.3 million. These nice reserves that we've had are allowing us to put cash to the high school project, approximately $6 million. And they're also allowing us to put about 2 million, 1 and 1/2 to 2 million for the renovations to the middle school also. I handed out tonight a preliminary projection of what our budget looks like for five years after this current fiscal year. And again, I'd just like to stress that these numbers are very preliminary and can change based on state funding and what the board decides to do with any millage increases and things like that. So, right now, as I said, in 2018, 19, we are actually projecting a, we had budgeted originally a $2 million deficit. This in front of you shows a $1.2 million deficit, but that, that also includes the transfer over from the general fund to the capital projects fund of about $1 million that we had in surplus from last year. So, your actual ending deficit ends up being about $200,000 instead of the $2 million budgeted. That $2 million deficit also does not include transferring the money back for the bond payment. We think that we can, we've, we've been tight enough this year through our expenditures and we've gained some savings on some things like special ed and some outside agency tuition costs that we do not need to make that transfer of $1 million now. So, that's great news to come up to about a $200,000 deficit when we were looking at 2 million. So, that's good, good news there. And hopefully, throughout the next five years, we can continue to be very fiscally responsible during the year. Keep in mind, when we're budgeting, we only can budget what we know at that point. For example, state funding, we don't normally have a budget whenever, a state budget whenever we're trying to budget. So, that can lead to some excess revenue or, or some, a decline in revenue. And just some outside factors on expenditures we don't know about. So, keep those things in mind when looking at a five-year projection and how things can change quickly. For the 1920 school year, currently, and this is very preliminary, again, we're looking at an approximate $2 million deficit for next year at this point. To this point, we've had almost all of our budget meetings with the different departments and administrators and now it's just the formulation of everything, putting things together, deciding what new initiatives we would like to suggest to the board, you know, what, what new programs or what, what, what we're changing, things like, that came out of the budget survey, for instance, safety and social work and, and staffing and things like that. So, we're in the process of making those final tweaks to our budget numbers and hopefully we will have a preliminary budget presentation to you in March for your approval in April and then we'll post it for 30 days and hopefully a final budget in May. I know that was a lot of information to take in.
Jen, can I ask you a question back, the last slide you had there? On the general fund balance, I know earlier with the debt comparisons, you said the statewide average was like a 10% average. Is there an average for general fund balances across the state as compared to budgets? Or is there a recommended level that those should be at? That seems like a lot of cash that we have, which is a good thing, but how are we in relation to other districts across the straight, state from that standpoint?
I would say our, our overall fund balance is higher as compared to other, other districts around the state. I haven't done the analysis lately. However, I can talk to, talk about unassigned fund balance. Usually, we sit, the, the average is about 8% and that's what the state kind of mandates. So, we're, we're right there with, with that percentage. And again, like, if you look at our total expenditure, 64 million, our debt payments at, you know, six, six and 1/2, seven, we're right there at 10% the whole way through, actually.
Okay, thank you.
So, the general fund number that's there is reflective of all assigned and unassigned reserve funds, correct?
Correct.
Like, things, some of that is not money that we could ti, touch and, and spend.
You're right. So, about 5.2 million of that 18.24 million is non-spendable. And what that is, is our balance at LBT. At the end of last year, it, it was at 5.2 million. And if you can recall, we did put a funding holiday into this year's budget, which we'll be utilizing probably in April of this year. Because I feel that balance is getting a little high, we've had a lot of good claims years, claim years with the LBT plus some of our negotiations have come in good with benefit changes. And so, this year, we're doing one budget, our funding holiday, I believe next year. We're hoping to throw in two. And, and so, that'll, that'll help a little bit also. We are looking at 0% increases to, to medical benefits to our staff and this is going to be, I think, the third year in a row. So, tho, those are all good signs, but at the drop of a hat, that all could change. So, we want to be very vigilant of what is in that balance and, you know, where, where we want it to be in the future.
Specifically with the, the capital projects fund?
Uh huh.
Or the capital reserves fund, I guess, is really where my question's coming. You mentioned that right now, it's sitting at 13.3, it is?
Yes.
13.3?
Yes.
Six of that is already allocated as part of the high school project, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's already kind of spoken for. That leaves about 7.3.
Right.
Within that, you threw a number out of 2.5, wasn't it?
Yeah, probably about 2.
Something roughly like that?
2.4, 2.5 that we will use towards renovations.
So, that's, so that's where you would feel comfortable, there isn't a mandate or a, a specific guidelines on capital projects or capital reserve funds, the money that's sitting in there. However, when there's money in there, it has to be used toward capital projects, renovations, that sort of thing, upgrades to buildings and that sort of thing. Is that correct?
You are correct. So, that would leave us with about 7, probably about 6, 5 or 6 million after, after we put the cash to the projects. And it's important to keep that there because we know in the future that we're going to have to do some renovations at live, some, you know, roofing and, and some other things and Dave can speak to that. But, you know, we also have D-10 projects throughout the district and we want to make sure that we keep our facilities up to date and make sure all our systems are working properly and things like that. And also for, you know, those emergency things that break in, in our building. So, I, I think that, that pot of money will need to be there. We hopefully won't have to borrow again, but at least we have an extra kind of pot there for, for those types of projects.
In, in our history, what have we typically, before we got into these renovations and buildings, what typically did we carry as a reserve in capital improvements or reserves? And where I'm going with this is, does it make sense to keep that much money in there versus, you know, and not have to borrow as much and pay interest on that money in return? At, at what point is your comfort level or where should we be in that?
Yeah.
That's my question.
I mean, I think the projections that, or the fundings that Lauren is going to present here tonight, I think they're a, are a good, a good, solid option for us. Remember, we only have those reserves because of surpluses that we had in the budget because of unknowns from the state. So, that was us just throwing that, those, those plan con funds that we were owed and things over into that fund to make sure that we, we were stable enough to do some of these projects. Before that, I, I would have to look back, back to 15. I want to say our capital reserves might have been right around 6, 7, 8 million. Looking at 17, 18 right now, we were at 12 million and we did a transfer prior to that of $4 million into there and that was the plan con funds that we got back. So, that was about 8 million. I think that's where it stood for a little bit. But, I think it's important to make sure that there's enough funds here to do projects in the future, especially with some of the stuff that we're not including into the middle school project. If later down on the road, along the road, like 10, 15 years, there could be some systems that need updated and things like that, but we know that they can wait. So, did that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions for me before Lauren talks about the new bond issues? You're up. Let me switch my presentations here.
Well, while Jen gets that pulled up, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Lauren Stadel with RBC and I, I'm here this evening to just give you a brief update, as Jen mentioned, on the capital project financing. Both my partner Ken Phillips and myself have been in front of this board and prior boards and administrations a number of times over the last several years as you've been gearing up for projects of a very large magnitude. And we applaud this board and prior boards for your diligence and your planning in, in getting yourself to a position where you can borrow these funds at a, at an impact to the tax base that is as minimal as it can possibly be. So, there's a presentation in front of you this evening that I'll just go through very briefly and Jen stole a bit of my thunder with her awesome review of your existing debt, so I can basically gloss over the first page. But, the first page, I'll just reiterate, on the left side is a summary of all of your gross outstanding debts. That's all principal and interest that's due on all of your existing debt before we issue the second piece that we're going to talk about tonight. On the right side of the page, you'll see net of state reimbursement. So, what you get through the plan con process is netted out on the right side so you can see your debt service run rate from now through 2039. Next page I thought was important to show just because I know there was a little bit of discussion back when we were first talking about the funding of the high school and the middle school renovation on, do we get all of the cash at once? Do we break it into a couple pieces? Ultimately, we decided to break it into two pieces and turned out to be a pretty good strategy. You can see the red bullet point on the left side of the page. Back in June of last year is when we secured the first piece of the financing, approximately 30 million. And interest rates were at, you know, very attractive rates at that time and the thought was, well, should we go and get more because we know we need to borrow more than that? There were some projected Fed increases last year and they did actually come to fruition and you can see that throughout the rest of the calendar year, interest rates did tend to rise. However, unforeseen to the market, rates have really dropped here over the last several months. And so, we're actually probably going to come in at a better rate on this next piece than we did on the first. So, it was an effective hedge where we didn't maybe know exactly how much money we needed to borrow at the time. So, we got your seed money and hedged ourselves and wait and saw what interest rates did and as it turns out, they've, they've gone in our favor. And so, we'll be moving hopefully into the marketplace in the next two weeks or so. As Jen mentioned, we did have a rating call today with Moody's that went very well. I have no reason to believe that your rating will be changed from its current strong rating of A1, but we'll see what the report comes out with in about a week. Next page then is the summary of the current plan as it stands. Column two is all of your existing debt except the 2018s. Column three includes the 2018s. Column four is then a pro forma estimation of what the 2019 funding would look like. We're getting you approximately, if you look in the footnotes, 31.5 million for the balance of the new high school project. We've got a little bit of rate contingency built in there so that if things do, do go sideways in the next couple of weeks before we actually price the bonds, we still feel comfortable with these estimates. And you'll see in the middle, in the, in the red column, that we are using approximately almost $6 million of school district reserves. And that's really been the plan for the last several years, is to use some of that cash that you've built up in capital reserve to help you offset the millage increases that are necessary for the project. So, rather than, which under Act 1, it would be impossible to absorb all of that mill impact for a project of this magnitude in one year, we're stretching it out in that green column, number nine, over a number of years of about 0.27 mills every year annually so that you're not having to absorb that in one fiscal year. But, in order to do that, you need a pot of cash. So, that's where the $6 million comes in that Jen referenced. So, we're stretching it out over time, using your $6 million of cash to phase it in. And just as a point of reference, back when we did the Act 34 hearing, the projected total millage in the green column was close to 2.2. I think it was maybe 2.17, 2.18 in that neighborhood. Just as a result of interest rates being a little better than what we assumed at the time of the Act 34, that, that assumption is now down to 2.04. So, we're moving in the right direction and as Jen said, this includes no state subsidy in the form of plan con. So, in the event that you do get that, that would be a little bit of icing on the cake, but this is sort of a worst case if you don't get any help from the state on the debt. Next page then includes discussions that we've had with Jen over the last couple of days with the need for an additional approximate 7 million for the renovation of the middle school. Since you're going to be in the market anyway and you know how much you need approximately for the renovation, it probably makes some sense to add the 7 million for the renovation into this financing. You'll save yourself some issuance costs rather than having to come back next year or later this year and do a whole new financing, get a whole new rating, advertising and all of that. There's a lot of economies of scale by doing them together. And given the rates that I reviewed two pages ago, it probably makes some sense if you're ready to pull the trigger on securing that financing to go ahead and finance it with the 2019 high school debt. So, we've added in the 6.5 million, it gets you $7 million of proceeds for the renovation. And it's important to note that the board in 2017, when you authorized the financing for the projects, you did authorize a total amount of 70 million. We were only expecting to issue somewhere in the neighborhood of about 60 million, but because we had that extra cushion in the, in the resolution that you passed, there's no need to pass an additional resolution to finance that last piece. It will fit within the structure and the schedule that we provided to the state. So, there's no additional resolutions or filings or anything that, anything that you would need to do in order to complete this and we just do it as one series of bonds together. Now, there is an impact to doing it because we have to live within that structure that we provided to DCD and it is an additional expense. We're, we're projecting a little bit higher millage, closer to 2.5 and additional cash would be needed to fight, phase that in. But, in discussions with Jen, between the interest earnings that you're going to be receiving on the bonds themselves and the cash reserves that you have in capital reserve, Jen feels and we do too, that the district is in a position that this does not put you behind the eight ball and leave you cash poor in terms of future small projects that may come up that need to be funded from cash. So, that's where we stand right now. I would be happy to open it up to any questions that you may have and review this any further with you.
I have one question, if I might take time to ask it, and that is, we were fortunate when we put the first, put the high school project out to bid, that the bids came in lower than expected. Maybe we can catch, catch it twice that way with this part of the project. But, if we don't, say bids do come in higher than we expect, are there any kind of contingency plans in place with how you would, how you would recommend addressing that?
Are you saying in terms, if you need additional cash and we've already financed everything?
Yeah.
My suggestion would be that if we're ready to get some now, we get you the 7 million and in the event that lightning doesn't strike twice and that your next bid goes the other direction, we either, we can evaluate with Jen at that point in time, okay, what's, what's the delta? Do we feel comfortable paying it from cash? Does it make sense to wait and do another small cleanup financing, an interim bank loan? Something along those lines can be explored as well. But, the economy's a scale that you achieve by just adding in this 7 million that you think you may need for the renovation makes a lot of sense because the issuance costs of doing another deal, you know, you're probably going to save 50 to $75,000 by combining them together versus splitting them apart. Great question. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Benko at this point? Okay. We'll move on to our first public comment period now. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If you have anything you would like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing nobody moving, we'll move on to Board President, Communication. Just two things to note, we did Just two things to note, we did host a visit with Governor Wolf on February 7th at the high school. He came to announce his new broadband internet access initiative that will be taking place across the state. It was an exciting time to have him here. We also had an opportunity to share some thoughts with him related to some of the educational initiatives that all of us are passionate about, so it was a great visit and it's always an honor to host somebody like that in our district. We did also have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters and our solicitor also provided us with the ongoing updates related to the Washington Township case that we're still involved with. So that is it as far as Board President's Communications, so at this point, I'll move on to the approval of the minutes. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 15th, 2019 Board Meeting.
Hello.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? And the motion carries. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 17th, 2019 Board Planning Meeting.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? And the motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our Consent Agenda. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the Consent Agenda.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion?
Wanted to highlight some of our retirees that have, are on our agenda for tonight. Four, four on there, three of which have 17-plus years of service to the district, so just want to take time and say thank you to those who have been here, especially those who've been here for a long period of time. Mr. Denon Court, Darlene Segal and Kathy Ryan announced their intent to retire, so thank you very much to those three, especially for their many years of service.
Any other questions? And the motion carries. Okay, moving on to the Capital Project Steering Committee, we do have two action items here tonight. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve and support the renovations in addition for the current high school to be transitioned to the new Dover area middle school with maximum building and project costs of $7 million set forth by the Board of Directors. Support for this project is based upon the following: the unsustainable and aging infrastructure of some of our current high school's physical plant and systems; the fact that this project, in conjunction with the construction of the new high school, has an impact district-wide, creating a grade six through eight middle school, ultimately relieving spatial constraints in our elementary buildings; and finally, the importance of our current Dover students and those of the future to be provided educational opportunities in a safe 21st century learning environment as it relates to educational programming and learning environments.
No moves. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
I guess, the question I have, I think when we looked at the presentation last month, it was like 6.5, Mr. Bedia, for the total cost initially?
I think, I think it was like 6.7.
6.7.
The 7 million includes like the 350,000 that we're also doing the roof with out of the capital project spend this summer.
Okay, so that 350, we're going to include that into the bond?
That'll be part of the cash that we're paying out.
And I guess with that, when you're looking at the renovation plans, it looks like we're basically just doing some freshening up on, on, on a lot of the classroom. Is that true? I mean, is that pretty much?
Well, this, the scope from the 5 million to where we are today, because actually at one point, it was upwards of 8 million and then administrative team and our team met to bring the cost back down to about the 6.7. There were some other areas of program like moving art that I would say is beyond freshening, but their specific program needs to relocate that program, that those costs are higher. But this is not a, it's not an estimating exercise. The scope has increased. There's, there's value to what is being done to increase the scope to the 6.5 million. Things like moving the art department and some renovations. There are other areas that are light reno, but we've increased some program which has a relationship to the cost.
And then one of the other thing I noticed on, on the plans, you're, you're, it looks like you're maybe relocating some science rooms to different floors. Can you explain the reasoning behind that instead of just leaving those, those science rooms where they are so we don't, so we don't incur that cost of?
They're all staying where they are.
Art is relocate. Art, art. That might, that might be the area that you're referring to.
All right. I was concerned about all that moving gas pipe.
All utilities. Yeah, sure. Makes sense.
That's all I have.
Question related to the overall cost and the scope of this. By investing this amount of money into this building at this point, is this getting us what we need to have this building where it needs to be 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road, so we're not coming back five years from now saying we need another 2 million to do something else, another 3 million to do something? Does this get us to some long-term stability with that building? I know we'll have ongoing maintenance, things that, you know, come up. You have pipes that break and air conditioners that die, so we'd have that, but will this get us where we need to be building-wise down the road?
This is probably the scope of work, and I certainly want Dave to speak to the infrastructure, but this is probably the dollar value and the scope of work that we'll prioritize to get you to that point. There is certainly more work that could be done, but one of the advantages that I think you have that we discussed from the get-go is the additional space. Typically, we're trying to solve issues where we just don't have enough program space, but by only having three grades and as you read in the motion too, by eliminating the need to do work in the other elementary schools by pulling the sixth grade out and consolidating, it certainly addresses a lot of program and there is additional square footage and space that you can grow into, but the 6.5 million dollars does address some pretty significant infrastructure issues, the boilers and so forth that I let, I'll let Dave speak to that have been on that list for a few years, that it's an exercise in prioritizing what things have the biggest impact for the least amount of money, so.
Yeah, we're, you're right. One of the big things we're doing, we're not going in every classroom and gutting it and starting over. It's mainly we're painting the walls. We're figuring about 10% replacement of ceiling tile, just bad ceiling tile that might be damaged from one thing or another. Some rooms don't need any, some rooms need more, but about 10% overall. Flooring doesn't need done except in a couple areas, so we're doing selective with the flooring. Our big things are, are boilers. We have three boilers that run that school. Right now, only two of them operate. One of them has a severe leak in it, so don't want to spend $20,000 on a boiler to repair it if we're going to go through with this project and replace it. They were converted coal boilers to run natural gas and fuel, and fuel oil combination back in the 70s. If you remember back in 76, 77, 78, when we had the natural gas crisis, you had to switch over to oil. They were originally steam boilers, they were converted to hot water, so their efficiency is pretty much nothing. We're, we're just, might as well open the windows and just, you know, pour the fuel right out the window. Our cooling tower remote sump, when they did the project back in 2000, I'm not so sure who designed the sump, but it wasn't big enough, so they added a second tank onto it. It's still not big enough, so every time the sump, uh, air conditioning shuts off and the water comes back, about 300 gallons goes down the sewer. And then when it starts and turns back on, we have to run 300 gallons of new water and so we're wasting, wasting water. We've still got some pneumatic controls in the building and we want to try and get rid of them and go all to DDC, which we can control DDC, we can't control pneumatic, we can't program it, we can't make it do what we want it to do. As an alternate, we have in there about air conditioning the gym, but if we don't air condition the gym, we have to do something with the current air handlers because they're, they were put in when the gym was built back in 19, help me out, 80 something, 90 something, whenever it was built. So they're original, they have never been replaced. So those are the big highlights, we want to try and hit on this. Mainly, it's the infrastructure stuff we really want to hit. Our generator's not big enough, we have to do something with that. It's, you know, constantly, if it comes, if we lose power in, in the high school, and I'll turn around and look at Tom because he'll shake his head, we have 15 minutes to get it back on or it's going, everything's going down in the high school. So we really have no backup power. It overheats after 15 minutes because it's so overloaded and it's so undersized. So that was, that's one of our big things, you know, mainly the big stuff is what we're trying to do.
We'll also develop alternates, just like we did with the high school, to hedge, as Lauren mentioned, the bidding climate, to give the board some flexibility to consider some other costs if the bids do come in under. There are other things that could be considered to be done and there would be an economy of scale if it could be included in the project. Conversely, if we don't make the bids, we'd exercise some value engineering effort to try to get the district back on track with what did we hear from the bidders? Was there a particular issue or availability? When you're talking some of these pieces of equipment that could have a premium, there might be another strategy that we could employ to help accomplish the same thing for a different cost. So we'll develop alternates to also give some flexibility to the bidders and ultimately the board to decide on what that final scope looks like based on cost.
Two, two questions. As far as the timeline is concerned, we approved this tonight. That basically gives you the opportunity to, to go out and get some bids. Is that correct? That you can start getting some costs back in?
We'd, we'd like to get, we'd like to get the roofing done on the gym and the auxiliary gym this summer. Every time it rains, we're mopping water out of the gym. So we'd like to get that done this summer. We're looking at possibility of replacing the generator this summer, just to get some of the big things out of the way, a few odds and ends, some ADA stuff that, in the bathrooms that doesn't quite fit the ADA model now, that did back then, but it doesn't now, so we want to try and straighten some of that stuff out.
The new, the new roof though would be funded from capital reserve funds, correct? That's not really part of this project, regardless of where we are on that. That could, that could happen.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
The other question that I have then is related to the, the motion that's on the floor with the ceiling of 7 million. Does that limit us at all if bids come in higher than 7 million if we've approved a, a motion like that?
Well, I think, and John can speak to this better than I can, but I think if bids come in over 7 million, we go back in and we value.
Engineer.
Engineer. You know, we, it's kind of what we did with the high school, you know, we were afraid it was going to come in over, so we had a lot of alternates. We value engineered some things in and out to make sure it hit, it hit our number and it did. We do the same thing on this one. You know, we just, if, if they come in at high, we'll make our adjustments and go at it again, so.
The nice thing about this, and it's not nice, I would love to get reimbursement for it, don't get me wrong, but at this point, this project is not a Plan Con eligible project, so we have a little bit more leeway of what we can do when we talk about changing the costs and things like that, so that, that is one of the benefits of it not being in the pipeline.
Because you don't have as many plans to submit to the state.
Right.
Making changes throughout.
Yeah, we eliminate that whole section.
Yeah.
What's the future capacity to Garvey at Intermedia School?
Of the new middle, if we, of the.
Middle school, you know, we have, you know, what number of students you figure in the future you'll be able to handle?
It's, it's going to be about what we have in there now. We're not changing the size of any of the areas.
I think the current is almost like 1,300 students.
I was thinking right around 12 or 1300.
The Plan, Plan Con capacity is fairly high, but your six through eight enrollment is closer to what number?
900.
Nine something.
So there's.
We have, we have a lot of room for present.
Yeah, that illustrates the capacity by four grades currently occupying the building and only having sixth, seventh and eighth, so that residual space is a result of one less grade and additional room.
One other question is, I don't know we're going to do it or not, but if we're going to put a new roof on, which I know we have to, would it be advised to put the air conditioning in before you put the new roof on because would that create some damage to the roof if you put the air conditioner in or is that no problem?
Well, we're going to use that, we're going to put that in as an alternate, so it won't really affect the roofing.
Okay.
We should, we'll still be able to put, if we put the roof on this summer and do the air conditioning next summer, we'll still be okay.
Yep.
It won't really make a big difference.
What about the 20-year rule for the high school? It's not been 20 years.
You just can't go for Plan Con reimbursement.
Oh.
That's all.
This, this project is not a, a reimbursable project, so that threshold of the 20-year rule wouldn't apply. And in fact, we'd probably tell you if Plan Con, even if Plan Con was eligible for this project, we will probably say not to submit for it because if there is a larger project down the road, you wanted cat, you'd want to do a project that would help you maximize your reimbursement and, and a 6.5 million dollar project on a building of this size is not enough.
Yeah, there's a moratorium on Plan Con anyway, even if we wanted to do it, we couldn't do it right now.
This doesn't reset the schedule or anything though, right?
No.
I mean, it wouldn't move 20 more years down the road.
That's actually an issue of some districts do face by doing a smaller project and then 10 years later realizing there's an enrollment need or there's other major infrastructure upgrades. In order to request reimbursement, you would have to reset that clock and that can be a problem and that's not going to exist for you. It's actually a good scope of work and does not establish any of those thresholds. The board's free to do other projects in the future if you choose to do so.
Dave, you had talked about putting a hallway in from the back, the gym area to the front. You had mentioned that about a safety.
We're still working on that.
Okay.
We are working on that.
So that, that necessarily isn't gone?
It isn't going yet. We're still trying, we're still doing some logistic type.
I didn't see it on the.
What's, we didn't, you don't have, we don't have any updated plans at this point.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. What she's talking about is we, Scott and myself, we kind of got together and started talking about maybe trying to get a hallway from, how can I explain this? From the, from the gym area that's close to the, that's close to the weight room? Bring a hallway up from like the weight room to the front office. So you wouldn't have to go, you don't, you wouldn't only just have the one hallway going back to the gym, you could go back to the gym, make a right turn, go to the end of the hallway, make another right turn and come right back up to the front office. So we're still looking at that. We're not sure if we can, if we can, you know, make it work, but we're looking at that to see if we can kind of make a loop so we don't have what's called a dead end corridor. You know, you get down there and you have to turn around, there's no other choice, so. But we are, we are looking at that.
He had talked about that at the construction meeting and I just thought it was such a good idea because, say, like you explained, the dead end, there's no place for the kids to go if they get hemmed back in there for any reason at all. And that hall will, is another way to get up to the front of the building if they need to get there quickly.
Yeah, it would come, it would come up along the backside of the auxiliary gym, through part of the current wood shop, part of current art, or not art, but part of.
Do you want to just show it up there?
Graphic design.
I can't, I don't have a plan.
I don't know if it works or not. I don't know if it works or not.
There it goes.
This is your hallway here going back to the gym and this is a dead end corridor. It comes up here, but it doesn't go anywhere. So what we started talking about trying to do is to bring a corridor up through here, which would give you a loop to get around and get back up through. That was just an idea we had. We have to, we have to bring it up through. This is a weight room. This is the auxiliary gym. Uh, these are the locker rooms here. So this is, uh, there's some storage back in here. This is actually the, the finishing room for the wood shop. Paint, paint booth in the back right here. And then that's storage for wood shop and then that's storage for, there's now graphic design, graphic arts. And then of course this is, another, a little tiny classroom. It looks more like a hallway. So we kind of thought maybe we could just shoot a, a corridor down through there and make a loop around. Again, trying to get rid of any dead end corridor. Not that you'd be trapped, which you could go outside, you know, it's not dead end that you'd be trapped out there, but you just can't, you can't move back up.
Any other questions?
So this vote is to put it out for bid, right? And then make a decision when the bids come in as to the next step.
Bids would still have to come in like they did before and then the bids would have to be approved.
But we're not committed to doing this if we vote on this tonight.
The board's not committed until you sign a contract for construction.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries. Okay, next up, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the enclosed proposal for furniture, fixtures and equipment and interior design services for the Dover High School with Crabtree, Warbaugh and Associates. The motion's our second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion?
I would be curious just what that might look like. How, how many people does it take to, to make that happen? And I, I know why it's here is because of the time constraints that we'll have in that summer, you know, to make that all happen. So what comes at a price tag, obviously, but what, what do you guys put into that? That would help me to justify that cost?
So the, you know, the equipping of a, of a project this size of the high school is a, is a pretty big effort. And, you know, state contracting alone and the procurement method isn't going to be sufficient to really cover every single space and function you're trying to address. What our interior design team does with having the knowledge and background of designing the spaces for the high school, we have a pretty good idea of what the expectations are, but we still have to conduct, it's, it's a design effort, just like we do the project. Our interior design team would meet with the administrative team and individual staff that are selected for departments to review the specific requirements. And one of the things that's unique about furniture is you could buy 25 different types of desks. You could buy 50 different types of chairs. It's to try to zero in on the one that you want as a district, what is functional. Certainly the cost of the furniture can vary significantly. So it, it is a design effort to meet with those departments and the administrative team to basically put a package together to compare to the state contracting price. No two vendors provide the exact same furniture. So we try to provide guidance on making sure in certain areas where you need to have specific requirements met, that they're met, but yet still do it cost effectively. Everyone keep their pencils sharp. And actually go through a procurement process where you develop a bid package to entertain bids from various vendors. They will also bring in mockups to test, kind of kick the tires, so to speak. The line item in the budget for furniture is about a million dollars. This fee or any fee, regardless of whether we do it or someone else does it, is part of that process and that line item. To go through and identify all the individual needs of all the different program spaces. And then when the furniture actually does arrive, just like construction, verifying that, what the district paid for and wanted is what is showing up on site and mitigating how all of those pieces of equipment arrive in the right space. And then ultimately, the last step is to certify for payment purposes. Has everything been delivered? Is it what was specified? And, uh, you know, if it doesn't meet the district's criteria. So it's, it's, it's a design project in itself to go through when you think about all the different program areas of the building, to make sure that that is the right fit.
This isn't, this isn't money over and above what we've already kind of laid out for this project. This is just kind of, am I, am I understanding you right that this is money basically being earmarked toward your company to do that part, portion of it? Is that correct?
It, it is, but, uh, you know, when we, when we assign a dollar value in that $64 million number, there is a line item for furniture and equipment. So the effort that would be required for a project this size, that is inclusive of someone designing and bidding this furniture package. So yes, it is part of what we already have in the budget.
Is there anything else that we can look forward to that might be coming our way like this that, you know, maybe unforeseen parts of, you know, finishing out the project? Anything with a grand scale like that that we just won't have time to deal with ourselves internally that, you know, we would need somebody else to do?
Furniture's probably the biggest.
I mean, we, we, we didn't, we don't have cameras in our package, so to speak, because we didn't put our, we didn't put cameras, we didn't put cameras, we didn't put, switches?
We're done.
Yeah, switches and routers. Uh, switches, routers, that kind of stuff for like the, the computer stuff because when we designed this till it's ready to be used by the kids, two and a half years later, what was available two and a half years ago and what's going to be available in another year and a half is totally different. Cameras in the last two years have come a long way. They're getting cheaper.
And better.
And better. I mean, we, we were given $1,200 a camera just a year and a half ago. And where you just put some in the offices for like 300 bucks and they're crystal clear. So that's, that's common. We don't, we're not going to need engineering help on that. We already have, we already know what we want. It's just a matter of that's going to be a, a line item we're gonna have to get when we get closer to finalization. So.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko? And the motion carries. Okay, we'll move on now to the Dover Eagle Foundation. Uh, the last meeting of the foundation board happened on February 6th. At that meeting, Mr. Wayne McCullough came and presented information about how the Southern York School District developed their foundation, giving our board of the foundation a lot of good ideas to move forward. The foundation board has some next steps, which will be to review the mission and the vision and the bylaws of the organization at their next meeting and to, to discuss additional committees that might be needed to help that organization operate. They were very excited at their first meeting to approve three grants throughout the district. Those grants provided things like 3D printers for STEM programs, financing for a submarine race and some other items. So it was about $3,500, $3,600 that went out in the district to benefit our students. So I think that's a very exciting and great news for the organization. Mrs. Krim, did you have anything you wanted to add on the foundation? Okay. Next, we'll move on then to the Unity Council Report with Mrs. Maile.
So we met January 28th and it was a group of students, teachers and administrators to go over the surveys that were emailed to all staff, teachers, students, grades K through 12 back in December. And we broke into three small groups. There was a elementary school group, an intermediate school group and a high school group to kind of go over the raw data and just kind of look at trends and, um, you know, some strengths, some areas that we need to improve in. I think it was a successful night. A lot of good information came from that. We're, uh, we'll be meeting again in February on the 20, well, this month on the 28th, uh, which is next Thursday, to go over the data a little bit more in depth and kind of take some action steps. One of the things that, that definitely came up was that we, we do need to educate our staff, our teachers and the students a little bit more about diversity in general. You know, possibilities of including it as part, part of the curriculum, not just kind of a one-time deal. One of the things that was interesting that came up in the intermediate school group especially, was that our students' sense of safety. I, I think some of the questions were worded in ways that we, as adults, might interpret a little bit differently. But the, the students definitely had some fears about the safety in their school. And not so much because of who they are, but just, you know, hearing the, the, the stories on the news about violence in other schools. And we had that drill at North Salem last, last year, year before? Year before. Some of those situations sparked anxiety in our students. And, um, one of the things that came out of that for us was that we need to be more transparent as a district to talk with the students about why we're doing things like this. You know, even having the resource officers in the school speaking to the students about that to, you know, make them understand why, you know, why we have those things in place and that if they have questions about, okay, well, how are you going to keep me safe that we can answer those for them? So that was kind of an interesting side note that came out of the surveys that I don't think we really expected. And I think one of, one of the other thing that definitely, things that came out was starting as early as fourth, fifth and sixth grade, found that the, the students felt, number one, judged on their appearance and their physical attributes and number two, on their size, which were, again, not necessarily things that we were, were thinking would come out of this survey, but it, it was pretty strong all the way from like fourth, fifth and sixth graders all the way up through the high school. So definitely an area that we need to explore a little bit more. And I think that's really, I mean, again, it was a lot of raw data, a lot of really good discussion. It was great to have the student input there as well, but I think at our next meeting, we, you know, need to move forward with some action steps.
Any questions for Mrs. Maile? Okay, thank you. Next up is the York Adams Academy. Mr. Emig.
Due to the snow in January, our meeting was canceled. Our next meeting will take place next Tuesday at the former York Central High School. And there is a motion on the, the agenda tonight to approve the general fund budget. Just to let you know, there is not going to be an increase this year towards tuition towards that.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 York Adams Academy General Fund Budget.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Benko? And the motion carries. Uh, Mr. DeLauder, York County School of Technology.
I'm actually going to defer back to Mr. Emig as he was gracious enough to attend the meeting for me in my absence.
Thank you, Mr. DeLauder. Yeah, um, last month, the, uh, York County School of Technology held a dinner for the school board representatives. And then after that was the, the official meeting and I attended both. And, um, they recognized student of the month. Uh, also, they are going to have their spring, spring musical, March 29th to the 31st entitled, "In the Heights." Other than that, I gave Mr. DeLauder a copy of the report from that meeting.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Emig? Okay, we'll move on then to LIU Special Education with Mr. DeChelle.
Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, Legislative, Mr. Rahauer.
Yes, I'll give a couple items I read today, uh, since Mrs. Britton isn't here. One is that the governor wants to put more funding into the public education, but they don't want to, nothing has been said about addressing the fair distribution of money to the school districts to help taxpayers out. And cyber school is being discussed as far as whether, if a school district, if I read this right, offers a competitive program and you want to send your child to a private cyber school that you pay for and the state is trying to get out of the cyber schooling. My next is on the learning center. We had an incident in January where they had a teacher and I guess a student were fighting. And one of the teachers lost one of her fingers. And we are going to have a resource officer in there full-time next year. I don't know how right it's working out because Northern Regional wasn't expecting demand for resource officers as it came in this year. So that's what I had to report on that. And then on the comprehensive plan, which is not on here, we had a meeting in February. We also had one last week. It was a good turnout. That was open to the public. The one in February was just for the committee. And I didn't feel so good, so I don't know how that all came out. It was pointed out that, uh, we need more recreational facilities in the township. This will come up. Well, the report will probably be in about a year till we get everything put together. And Chuck Richardson and I and everybody laughed. We were put on the antique committee.
Any questions for Mr. Rahauer?
If I could just jump in real quick, Mrs. Herman had asked me to provide some information to, at tonight's meeting in regards to the governor's budget that he put out, which, um, just noting, it is very preliminary. We're not sure how much of that will actually come to fruition. So, um, you had asked, um, the financial impact of the compulsory age, um, moving from 17 to 18. I don't think that that will have a very material financial impact on us at all. We budget like we're gonna educate our students until they graduate. So, um, unless it's an all ed placement or something like that, I don't, I don't think it'll impact our budget. As far as transportation goes, there'll be no material impact on our budget on that either. And we could lose out at any time based on, you know, other, other districts and what they get because it's, it's a formula. So I, I, I don't think it's material. It's nothing different than what's happened in the past. So I think we're good on that one. The financial impact of no additional dollars for plan con, that is not impacting us currently because our high school project is in the pipeline. So, I mean, other than our, our middle school project, we weren't able to submit for reimbursement for. So I just wanted to make sure I addressed those items.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, PSBA, Mrs. Britton is not with us tonight, uh, so we'll move on then to Mrs. Herman with the Dover Industrial Development Committee.
Okay, I, I have no report.
Okay. Mrs. Krim, superintendent's report.
First, a big thank you to the intermediate school for their displays around the room. Uh, we have.
We have some art and we have some facts over there, so check it out before you leave. Also, just to let you know, we have posted the high school assistant principal position. We are hoping to bring you a hire in April. Today, as Mr. Rahhauser said, he's very involved with the Dover Township's Comprehensive Plan, we here hosted the Dover Township ICDC Focus Group. And this group is a group of employers and business owners in the area. We also worked on the Comprehensive Plan today, and we talked about what, what we are looking for. And again, recreation came up and jobs and those kinds of things. So it was, it was a great, it was a great turnout and a lot of good input. You have in front of you the first, the eagle. This is, this is, by the way, printed here. It's, it's going out to print on Thursday professionally that all taxpayers are going to get. So, or all, or all residents are going to get. So you get a first peek at it, so if there's, if you find any typos, please let us know before we send them to the press. Did you find a typo? Seriously? Okay, yeah, please show me at the end, because we're sending them out. Huh? What? Oh, that's right. Okay. And finally, next Tuesday, February twenty-sixth at six-thirty, up here in the board meeting is the second Community Coffee and Conversation with the Superintendent. This month, we are going to be, if you remember, the first month we did, or the first time we did it, we focused on our own Comprehensive Plan and the building project. So this month, we are focusing on our student services and student needs. So Mrs. Guyer will be there discussing our special ed program. Mrs. Johnson will be there to talk about mental health and a little bit about our survey and our data. And we always give a building project update. So come on out. That is next Tuesday at six-thirty. And that's all I have.
Okay, questions for Mrs. Krim?
I know this is, this is culmination or the beginning of a much-needed, seemingly, you know, missing component of our communication piece with, with our residents. So I was just curious, in that process, do we have an idea of what a mailing costs to the district?
We have an exact cost. Yes. So this is just a four-pager. And we figure we'll do a four-pager in the winter, but in the fall, it'll be bigger, because there's a lot of compliance you wanna put in here, a lot of your policies you wanna include. So this size is a total cost of five thousand dollars. So we are looking at doing one in the fall. That will be bigger, about this size in the winter, and then probably in the spring, about this size. Honestly, we had to cut it down. We had so much more information we wanted to send out, but we, you have to go like from four to eight, I think, so you can't just add anything. So we cut it down to there, but we really do think at the beginning of the year, there's so much information about busing and, you know, snow emergencies and all those kinds of things that you do want everyone to have. So, so yep, five thousand seventy dollars.
It would be interesting to get feedback, you know, on how well this is being received and read, and, you know, if there's a way to, to get some sort of feedback on there.
To get some feedback.
It would be really good.
Yeah, we will try.
Okay, a question regarding the recent survey that was sent out regarding branding for the district. Are we seeing a steady response to that yet, or?
Yeah, we haven't...
We don't see the results directly.
It's still open.
Okay, all right. Okay. Miscellaneous period. Any other comments or observations from our board members tonight?
Okay. I did wanna make a comment and just thank the administrative team who reached out to my family in recent loss, my mother-in-law. My wife and I, thank you very much for the card that was signed and sent. It was very gracious and very much appreciated, so thank you to everybody who participated in that.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on then to our final public comment period. It is a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If you have anything you would like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name for the record. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our future meeting announcements. We do have our board committee meetings this Thursday at six P.M., and our board planning meeting at seven P.M. Then on March nineteenth, we will have our board action meeting at seven P.M. If there is no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.